Start the work session at 4:30? Yeah, 4:32. All right. So, we will start off with item number one, which is the recommendation from the Personnel Board on paid holidays. Do we have anybody here to talk about that?
Oh, me.
Kevin? Okay.
I'm sorry.
Looking at what's in our packet, we've got, what I'm seeing at least, is that the city of Faribault has fewer paid holidays than many of our local municipalities.
They don't have Mardi Gras Day.
Well, basically, I think that's just consisting of a day and a half that we recommended to meeting.
So, yeah, it looks like they've asked for three, or two and a half, which is full day on Christmas Eve. Didn't we?
We did a half a day. We had to do a special deal to do a half a day last year to give them the full day.
Okay, 'cause, well, we did do full day last year.
And I think it's kind of ridiculous just to have a half a day on Christmas Eve, so I kind of presented that to the Personnel Board.
What happens if Christmas Eve falls on a Sunday? Would you give them the previous Friday? Or would you do Christmas and then say Christmas is a Monday? Would you do a Christmas the day after Christmas?
Generally, they get two days.
Yeah, I think-
I would say Friday and Monday.
So, basically, it's saying two days of Christmas.
Yeah. Yeah, the way my office does it, if Christmas Eve and Christmas Day are on a Saturday, Sunday, you get Friday and Monday.
Right.
That's usually how it works. We also went, I'm sorry.
Does the, do the employees, did we not, did they not get a personal holiday, like their birthday or something like that? Is that included in that nine and a half days?
We have the list. I don't remember.
I don't think it was.
I don't remember since, no. Birthday day.
The holidays we were looking at were just the holidays for the month, for the year.
Well, we're going to compare to the other cities. I'd like to know if, you know, they're counting a personal day off or some, you know, some kind of not flex time, but-
They just get a paid-
Floating holidays and things like that. Because the personal day off is basically, it's another day. It's not, it doesn't count on your PTO.
I'll have to get back on that, 'cause I don't know.
I'm not saying we don't need to get in line with them, but I thought that it was a little bit more than that.
Is anybody here from HR?
I don't think so.
I thought Janie was going to be here. I notice she's got the recommendation in there.
Well, if they get here throughout this, we might revisit it. But, I mean, yeah, I, you know, I get it. You know, Juneteenth is a federal holiday.
No.
Is it not federal?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, and so, Christmas Eve, given a full day at Christmas, I get that. Mardi Gras Day, I think, is a little different. I mean, we don't have, I mean, Mardi Gras shut down in Mobile because you can't get to work in downtown Mobile, but I don't know.
I guess my point was if we added a day and a half, you'd get to 12 if you count the personal day. But is that personal day a floating day, or does it have to be taken on your birthday?
The employee should know.
You do not have to take it on your birthday.
You don't have to take it? Okay, so floating holiday.
So, what is Daphne? Daphne's the closest to us at 10. What do they do differently than we do? Do we not? Do they just get a full day for July, or for Christmas? Christmas Eve?
Now, I think, I think we're pretty much the only ones that took a half a day for Christmas Eve.
And we're technically at 10 and a half, not nine and a half.
Yeah.
Because of the personal.
Correct.
Floating day. Yep. And I got everybody out in that audience, I say that with a lot of sensitivity to employees out there. I'm not trying to, you know, but we need to see a real picture of this if we're making decisions.
I'm just trying to look at it and wonder, and looking at some of these other municipalities. And it doesn't, you know, and look, it doesn't, it doesn't really matter. I mean-
State gets 15 days.
And that's, I'm sitting here trying to figure out what, what holidays are the-
It's government, man.
Now, look, I'll tell you, and I'll tell them myself here, but I spent a year at the courthouse in Mobile, and that was the greatest job I've ever had, because I learned holidays that I didn't know existed. 'Cause I remember, we're closed on Monday. I was like, for what? And it was, you know, Columbus Day, or Jefferson Davis's birthday, or something that I didn't know was a celebrated holiday, and it's closed. And so, you know, that's getting, that's stretching it to, and that's where, that's why you have 15 on some.
Yeah.
I wonder if there's not floating holidays in there. For instance, in my, in my company, if I don't want to take July the 4th off, I can take it at Christmas.
Yeah. So, even if there's floating holidays in there, if you look at those numbers, you're looking at a mean, I'm not doing the math, but it looks like it's around 11 or 12 if you're going to do the mean.
Yeah.
Even if you add the floating holidays.
Yeah, I was thinking that you had to add a day and a half to get to that mean, if you count the floating.
To get to the minimum.
Day and a half.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with it. I mean, they're behind. It's a deficit. We've just got to figure out the logistics of it.
Yeah, I don't either.
To be honest, I'll just put that out there.
I'll tell you what the state holidays are, if you want.
Yeah, tell them what the state holidays are.
They have, other than ours, we've got New Year's Day, Martin Luther King's Jr.'s Day, Robert E. Lee's Birthday, which is the same day, George Washington, Thomas Jefferson's Birthday, Washington's Birthday, Confederate Memorial Day, Memorial Days, the Anniversary of Jeffrey Davis's Birthday, Juneteenth, Independence Day, Labor Day, Columbus Day, Veterans' Day, Thanksgiving, and Christmas. They don't take off for Christmas Eve.
Well, they added Confederate Memorial Day, so it's better than Christmas, I guess.
Christmas Eve. They take Christmas off.
Is that a motion from you, Court?
I listened carefully.
You know, is this something that the Personnel Board is wanting us to take action on tonight, or is this a recommendation they're making for us to consider?
This is just a recommendation they're making for us to consider and vote on.
Yeah, look-
They would like to see it passed, but-
Yeah, my thought is, is, you know, I mean, there are plenty of ways that you go about enticing employees and keeping good ones, and this is one of them. And you definitely don't want to be the guy in last place on paid holidays.
I have no problem with it. I agree.
And so, I absolutely think this is something we should consider. I do think Jack does make a good point about us having that extra floating holiday that, and look, maybe all these other places have it too. I don't know.
And it may be, and maybe they're not counting in there.
Yeah. They all, everywhere else might have it. And you might get your birthday off everywhere, and I just don't know it, or we don't know it. And so, it may be that that's, they get that one day in addition to these. So, it may be that even by adding these two and a half, we're still behind. But I think this is a good start, obviously.
I'd throw out there that probably ought to adopt Juneteenth as a holiday, New Year's Eve, but with the caveat that I think if Christmas and New Year's are on a weekend, I don't know that you want the city closed Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
Because everyone else will be back to work, and everything will be back to normal.
Yeah.
So, I mean, there might be a lot of people on vacation, but I think being closed like on Monday and Tuesday, if it was to say you're closed at 26th and 7th, or, that seems like that might be a little much. Maybe so, maybe in that one instance, you do a floating holiday or something, instead of just having the city closed.
There are other options. You can just always add just a floating holiday, let the employees decide. But that may mess up, city may-
It gets kind of tricky, I think.
May mess up the services if you don't have enough to-
Yeah, I think, I think it was probably easier for them just to schedule by knowing what days are we.
So, what are you saying, Jimmy? You're saying if Christmas falls on what? They'll get Tuesday off as well?
Well-
Why would they get the Tuesday?
Well, they were saying if we did Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, they're saying you get two days. So, if Christmas Eve was Saturday and Christmas was Sunday, and you got two more days, and you would either have Friday and Monday, or Monday and Tuesday. And I'm just thinking, having all those days would be a lot.
Having the city be closed four days in a row.
Yeah, you wouldn't, I wouldn't think you would get, I think you would get that Friday, you know, 'cause it falls on a Saturday, so you're off anyway.
Correct.
You would get the Friday, you're off Saturday, you're off Monday, you come back Tuesday.
Correct.
It's how I would-
That's what I'm saying. I think being off Friday and Monday, I mean, it would be nice.
He's saying have the city-
I'm saying the city probably needs to be-
Be it shut down four days in a row.
Or you're saying period. It doesn't matter about the days, just having Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday shut down.
Yeah, 'cause if we're, if we're closed Saturday and Sunday, normally anyway, at least at City Hall, and you take off Friday and Monday, then you got four days of no activity, and that might be, that might create problems. Don't all the banks have-
We've got rules about-
You can't be closed more than three days in a row.
That's right.
What we do, we adopt that holiday schedule every year.
Yeah.
And establish the number of days and look at the calendar and determine what-
To manipulate.
Right.
If it falls on that-
Twelve days, it's going to be.
If that falls in that odd scenario, you throw in a floating day or something.
Right.
We adopt it every year.
Yeah.
That scenario is this year.
Yeah, that's why I said we are ready.
Yeah, I think that's, I think-
Can I say something?
Yeah, please.
You adopt it every year, but it's actually in our handbook.
What's in your handbook?
You change, the holidays, we'll have to change the handbook.
Yeah, yeah, we understand. We're talking about the actual days.
I know, but I mean, what I'm saying is, the only reason I bring it forward is because everybody wants to know what the dates are, so I've been doing that. If it was a special day, then maybe y'all would be voting on that. You're actually voting on what's in the handbook unless you change it.
Yeah. Well, we're talking, I mean, so, but we're talking here about changing what days you get anyway, so the handbook would have to be changed.
Right. It would have to change. That's what we're talking about.
But essentially, I guess what Jack's saying, and I think I agree with it, is that we're voting on the amount of paid holidays you're going to get as an employee, what specific day some of those might fall on in a given year might change depending on, and that'll be, I guess, what we decide-
Exactly.
Whenever that is voted on each year.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's probably, I mean, the best way to handle it.
That's pretty standard.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's-
But, but as far as these days that they've requested here, I don't, I don't have any heartburn about it. I mean, I think these are fair. I think, you know.
But actually, that, going back to that scenario of Christmas Eve and Christmas, we're on Saturday and Sunday, that's the best case scenario, right? Because if it's on a Wednesday, in the middle of the week.
You're still only going to-
Take two days.
Or if it's on, if it's on a Thursday, then it's Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Right.
True.
That's what I'm saying, so.
Yeah, I think that's-
You're still only closing the city down two days.
Yeah. Two days more than they normally would be closed.
Well, a half a day.
It's just-
And then you would have on-call people. You would still have operations of some sort. You know, it's not like-
I would seem to think it'd be like any other day. I mean, like, that's when I say any other day, any other day that you're off, as far as handling your business at the city. I mean, on 4th of July, it's not going to happen. You just got to, if it's 4th of July, or it's Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, and like this year, it's, Christmas Eve is on Sunday, so you'd have to give, push the holiday to Friday or Tuesday, to which, I mean, when you say four, everybody says four days, but the weekends are closed anyway. I mean, there's two straight days. Everybody seems to not have a problem with that, or so far, with the ones that are on call. I mean, I don't think that's going to be an issue to me.
Yeah, you know, just a technicality, I think, some-
Yeah, I mean, there's no guarantee that it would be a problem. It just, the longer that there's not access to employees, the longer the potential to have a problem arises. And so, it's just a, you know, it's a possibility. It's a potential problem, not an absolute problem. All right, well, I'm okay-
I'm okay with that.
With that, with this recommendation, so without hearing any other heartburn or objection to it, we can get that added to the next council meeting?
Sure.
All right.
You're going, you're going to make it 12, or you're going to make it 13?
I'm going to make it 12.
Well, we have to find out if we have, do we have a floating day? We do have a floating day.
Yeah, we do have a floating day.
It's the birthday.
It's the Burton Day. Yeah. So, can, is there anybody that can see if those rest of those guys that we're making our comps towards is adding that floating day in there? I think that's a rate-limiting variable that, that, that we're looking for to make a final decision.
Or unless somebody just wants to make the argument, make it 13, you know what I mean?
I don't, yeah, you can, yeah, I mean, the highest is 15. So, even if we add the floating day, they will be at, what, 13?
They'd be at 13, so we'd still be-
Just leave them there.
Yeah. I mean, we'd still, we'd still be either in the middle, you know, one ahead of a couple of others.
And certainly not out of the norm.
No. It would be, it would be less than some, more than others.
Right.
And I think that's probably fair.
So, I think that's fair. Yeah, leave it at 13.
My thought would be 13.
I think that the resolution just needs to stay, it needs to go from 10 and a half days to 13 days.
To 13 days. Not 9 and 1/2.
Because that's accurate portrayal of what we have.
I think that's probably right, yeah. To reflect the 12 paid holidays plus the floating holiday. All right.
Yep.
Fair enough.
Yep.
All right. Committee updates. Council?
They're all coming up, starting this week, and at the beginning of the month, they'll have any.
I don't have anything.
Do you have any update?
Kevin? I will, I'll talk briefly about the Historic Preservation Commission, kind of the process. I've looked at it, I think I told you all this a couple of weeks ago, I've looked at it, Marcus has looked at it, Chris has got it now. He presented some issues to me about where the language doesn't track the state ordinance that we just want to look at to make sure we're not going beyond what the state-
Constitution is, yeah.
Yeah, and just to make sure we're not running afoul of anything, that we want to make, that we're not creating something that we can't police, and that we're not giving powers that we don't have the authority to give.
Correct.
And so, we're just trying to run that down. I know the Historic Preservation Committee met this morning, and I was not able to give that update to them then. I will be speaking to them about it, but it's just something that we're trying to iron out to make sure we get it done. Before we bring it to council, that it's in the position that it needs to be in, so that if there are changes after that, it will be from at least a good, clean start.
Very well.
But we'll get there.
Yep.
All right. Moving on. Who would have thought the longest discussion we'd have today would be about how many paid holidays we get, but we might be headed that direction. So, let's keep, keep it up, guys. All right. Department head updates. So, come forward with your update and any item you might have on this very short agenda.
And not to add any confusion to things, and maybe Kim will give me a nod here, understand that in, in the whole leave-holiday things, on, for an employee that has between zero and 10 years of tenure with the city, they accrue 80 hours of vacation plus their birthday. So, it's 88 hours, and that is leave that you may use. If you don't use it, you lose it at your anniversary date.
Yeah.
If all of a sudden you take that eight hours of birthday, which is currently personal leave, and you move it to holiday, that adds a whole big ramification, because I understand every one of the operating departments have people that have to work on holidays, and they get paid entirely different when they work on holidays, whereas leave is categorized in a whole different area, and if you don't use it, you lose it. So, don't think that floating day is a holiday. It is just leave that is accrued by the employee.
Yeah, we understand. I think it's just the fact that you have those eight opportunity hours. We understand that, I think that was the gist of the conversation. We totally understand that that's a PTO still, you know, or type situation, but we wanted to see if they were adding it in their holidays, but anyway, we understand.
Does every employee get that, Richard?
Yes. After one year, you, you know, we, you accrue in the arrears, meaning you have to work for 12 months, and then that, that accrued leave, that 88 hours, belongs to you at that point in time, and then you can start using it on, at one year and one day of employment. And it just, but it, if you don't use it, it goes away on your anniversary date, and then you get a new bucket, and it keeps moving forward.
Right.
So, I just didn't, I mean, because it's really not, it's, in the accounting or in the employee's view, that is just part of their, their leave, even though there's a line that says birthday, eight hours at the start of their anniversary date, so.
Yeah. I know that.
A couple of updates, and I wish they were, were progress updates I'd like. The pickleball courts, I was very excited. The contractor showed up on July 5th, got all the equipment out, cleaned up the surface, and was getting ready to put down the acrylic coating, the first layer, and it started raining. And he packed up and went, and hadn't had a dry day since July 5th to do that. So, we're hopefully that we'll get some dry weather and then get in and get that finished. It's not, the good news about the surfacing, it goes quickly, but they got to have a window of weather to be able to do that. If I would have given you an update a month ago on the track and field complex out at Founders, I would have said that they're ahead of schedule. 30 days later, I will tell you, they're probably starting to get behind schedule. We've had a lot of rain in the last 30 days, and that has definitely hindered where they're at. They've been working diligently to try to get the curb work in, because that allows them to start getting the pavement down and things of that nature. As you knew, know, you approve the refurbishing and remodeling and redoing of the Clock Corner Plaza. We've had the pre-construction meeting. We will be issuing the notice to proceed at the end of this week with a mandatory start date no later than August 1st, and a mandatory completion date of no later than November 1st. And so, we're excited about that. We're really working through all the coordination of lay-down materials and things of that nature. And we have our paving package out for bid right now. Tomorrow, we have the mandatory pre-bid meeting. We'll have that open, and hopefully you'll see the results at, the next time that we're together. I have four items on the agenda. Resolution, item number 10 is resolution to award the bid for the Haven Animal Shelter, major remodel. I know that we've had many conversations about the Haven, and there's really two items on the agenda tonight, but I do want you to understand kind of the structure of what we asked for in the bid. The base bid is $122,000, but we did ask for a 10% contingency that when we tear out the front facade, if we find more material that has been vector of water damage, that we have a little bit of cushion in there. We put a placeholder of $30,000 for just materials for our electrical department to not only handle any rewiring associated with the, with the front portion, but it would give them an opportunity to upgrade panels and some other things, because right now, it's at, but Ben feels like that, that theoretically, that number should be about $10,000 when all said and done, so hopefully that won't be that. And so, you see a total not to exceed of $164,200, and we did receive four bids. Three of them, I'd say is competitive. One was, was sky-high and out, out of the realm of what we thought was reasonable. Also, I have item number 11. We discussed this at the last work session. This is the intersection and signal improvements of the Clock Corner. And again, I kind of hinted that we, we asked for this bid in, with an additive alternate. As I told you, this is the oldest, at least in the current system, signalized intersection that we have in the city. And the controller that is there, that's the magical box that tells the signal how to behave, will run and operate the pedestrian signals, but not to their maximum capacity or maximum efficiency. So, we did ask for the contractor to respond with a bid, what would it, what would be the upgrade cost to replace that controller and the junction boxes and everything else, and they gave us that price. And Ben, the last time that signal went down, we got lucky. The state had an old controller that they donated to us, and we robbed parts out of it to get it back working. We cannot buy parts for the signal controller that, that is currently there. So, it is our recommendation, if the council sees fit, to award not only the base bid, but the additive alternates for, for the new controller system. And ultimately, that will allow the pedestrian signals to work at maximum capacity, but as we go through downtown and upgrade signals, it will be able for them to connect and be timed and things of that nature. And as you can see, the base bid is $65,602, and the upgrade to replace the controller is an additional $51,187, for a total of $116,789, and we are recommending awarding that bid. Next item is, in conjunction with the Haven, is they have to remain in operation during the remodel, and we're going to be basically gutting the four administrative office rooms, or the three administrative office room and the little, little prep area and bathroom. And so, we need to put them a temporary office trailer adjacent to the building that would have the ability for them to have an administrative office to receive folks, as well as, I don't know if you know this, but in one of those three offices, they use as a cat kennel, so that the cats have to have a place to reside while we're remodeling. And we're asking for an award to rent an office trailer. Our utilities will connect up sewer, water, and electric. It has air conditioning in the bathroom, and it'll allow them to stay in operation while we're doing that. And then item number 13, this is budgeted within the budget. We're requesting approval of selection of Jade Engineering to start the design work for what we call the Pecan Avenue Watershed Project, which, as you know, we've got a couple of drainage issues there that we, we just got to start planning on getting resolved. So, be glad to answer any questions.
Yeah, Richard, if I may, Council President.
Please.
On the bidding process, I was reading that, can you kind of go into a little bit of, as far as the base? So, you said they have a base bid of 122?
No, sir. The base bid, meaning that we can add pedestrian signals-
No, 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 on, on the contingency.
Oh, oh, you're talking about on the Haven?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Meaning that, that to just do the remodel work and finding no additional problems than what is in the scope of work, that price is 122. We asked the contractor, in their response to bids, to add a 10% contingency, because when we tear out that front wall, we don't know how far rot or termite damage may go into the site. So, that gives us a little bit of cushion, and our goal is not to have to come back to you for a change order to, for additional found conditions to resolve. Then, our electrical department has brought to our attention that the main service panel and several of the electrical features of that building is basically over capacity. So, they asked to, in this project, while we've got it tore out, to go in and upgrade and update the electrical and bring it into code. So, there's a $30,000 placeholder just for our electrical people to buy the necessary materials to do that, but Ben thinks that price is about $10,000, so.
So, we're doing the work?
No, sir. The, the construction work is being bid, but, but Ben and his people will act like a subcontractor for electrical, because he is-
So, that construction worker will pay the city back the $30,000 to do the extra work?
No, sir. That contractor will never see that $30,000, meaning that if Ben has to order a 400-amp panel, he will order it, and it'll be charged at $30,000, and his people will install it.
Just wanted to clarify.
Okay.
Because that, that could be a little confusing to that, to the, yeah.
And just so you know, we did this with the last Pecan building remodel. We acted as the subcontractor for electrical, and we had a, just a, a mount budgeted to We we acted as the subcontractor for electrical and we had a just a amount budgeted to purchase the electrical material for them to do that.
That's probably because we can get that off the state bid list, right?
Absolutely.
Components are a lot cheaper than they can. They're not adding fee.
Yeah, if the contractor's buying, he's adding 10% to whatever he paid for and charging us. We're we're cutting all that. We're we will act, the city will act as the subcontractor for electrical on this project.
Yeah, I just had some people reading the agenda, ask me about that, why are we giving extra $30,000 to a contractor to do work and this and that? And I said, that's not how it works. So I just wanted you to talk on it a little bit and explain it to the people.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
How was the visit Friday with Commissioner Blankenship?
It was a blast. And you know, the only thing is, the commissioner's a very nice guy, but he had wingtip shoes as we were walking through the park, but that's okay. He had a good time, so.
At least he got better than that.
Yeah, we we actually spent about three hours and walked through several of the sites and it is always, he was very complimentary. He said that, you know, he 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 said it just doesn't know what it means to him to see a city that's so receptive and actually takes this money and gets things done with it. He said, there are just too many of them that receive this money and and it's just woe is them and nothing ever happens and it's like pulling teeth. And he was very, very excited with what he got presented, what y'all got presented at the last work session and and he's excited and his comment was, he couldn't wait to come back for the ribbon cutting. So it was a it was a nice day Friday. Little warm in the woods, but it was nice.
A little bit on Friday.
So, anything else? Well, I thank y'all.
I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
The concrete pouring. Are we pouring concrete ourselves? I know we bought a truck, but I saw some things and I can't remember where I saw it, but I saw somebody was pouring concrete somewhere. And I was wondering, are we not doing those jobs or we can't, we not do those jobs from inside since we now have a concrete truck? Are we still pushing that out?
We're pouring concrete almost daily. Like on Friday, we did two, we ran two different loads. Now, granted, now you you have third parties working all over the city that if they if they tear something up, if it's if it's MediaCom or AT&amp;T, then they they have to put that sidewalk panel back. So yes, you may see third third party folks doing work and and God bless them, you know, we we rejected some curbing out there on Gafer as part of the punch list and they were trying to pour it today in the pouring rain. So it's getting ready to get rejected again and they're going to pour it again, so.
All right. But we are pouring on some of these projects, we're pouring our own concrete.
Yes, sir.
All right, very good.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
All right. Richard's now taken up about 40% of the agenda items, so.
That's a good.
What do you have, Wes?
Well, I don't have an agenda item, but I did want to bring something before you. The gas department participated or is participating in the summer intern program ship this year for the very first time. And it's going very well. We're about halfway through it. On August the 4th, there will be a graduation at the Nick Center for these two individuals. We have learned a lot from them. They've learned a lot from us. We appreciate you allowing us to do it. I had one of them spend the day with me today and he realized real quick, he does not want to be a gas superintendent when he grows up. But we appreciate your support of that and if you can join us on the 4th at the Nick Center, and I'm sure that will mean a lot to these guys. So just wanted to bring that before you. Thank you for allowing them the opportunity and our department the opportunity to participate with that with them.
What date is that, Wes?
August 4th.
August 4th.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Wes.
We, I've got item number seven, if y'all have any questions regarding the mural for arts alley. We spoke about that at the last work session. I have not received the the council's proposed edits for that yet from the artist. So as soon as I get those back, y'all will have those in your inboxes. But that is on there, an item number seven. And then also number 14, Lisa Daly, on behalf of the Trinity Presbyterian Church and I believe six other churches together are requesting permission for the North Beach to do the drive through nativity again. And it does say on here requesting police assistance, but they do do off duty themselves. So just clarifying that.
Thought it was best fireworks show we've had.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Any comments for, we we thought it went really well. We had a really pretty night with not a lot of fog. I think last year, we had a lot of fog out there, but we thought everything went really well. We had a lot of positive comments, so. We did, I talked, I spoke to Mayor Sullivan about this because something did get brought up and this is something we can talk about next year, but they do have the ability to shoot from a barge. I haven't got a cost figure yet on what that would look like. The company we do use and have used in the past, I think he intent, he kind of, a lot of the folks that do use them and have a contract with them for a barge, he probably would be happier with a two or three, maybe four year contract if he was to shoot from a barge for us. So with the restaurant opening on the pier, you know, we thought that might be an idea to toss around for the future so we could open up the pier for spectators to be able to watch from the pier. So it might just be a thought. I mean, we.
They tax us, of course.
So.
Yeah.
The folks that shoot our show also shoot Spectrum Resorts and they shoot from a barge. Obviously, the Grand Hotel shoots from a barge, so that same company who shoots our show said, you know, he'd love to sit down and talk to us about it. So something to think about.
Questions, guys? Thank you, Paige.
Great job.
Welcome.
Very well. Can you tell us your name again, my friend?
My name is Darryl Moorfield.
Darryl, okay.
And I'd like to make Darryl very welcome here because he's nervous as a cat in a room full of rocking chairs. He's never done this before.
Never done it before.
Well, it's okay.
Y'all go easy on the board for the first half of the time.
No, I get it.
Make his life easy.
I just know everybody and I I think I was introduced, but I could not remember his name, so I just.
Yeah, no worries.
That's right.
I've got item number nine, a new lift station contract was awarded to Hill Brothers for the amount of $225,000, or $225,100.
All right. Council, you have any questions for Darryl on item number nine?
Is the developers, are they paying for any of that within the AD construction or is that all city money paying for that lift station?
As far as I know, it's all city money.
It's in here. I read it.
Anything different on that, Kim?
Yeah, it's, we were paying 160 something and then we added another 163. Yeah, we was, let's see, it says.
Yeah, we've got two, we've got two purchase orders. One's for the wet well and the other one is for the for the motors and the controls. And we've got PO numbers for those.
So when I tried researching and I mean, there's a transition with Jason leaving, Darryl coming and I was trying to find out, couldn't find where there was any aid to construction. That's what I was looking for this morning for you. But there is money in the budget that we budgeted last for for this fiscal year for lift station renovations or improvements.
This is all city. Yeah, I think we made a, I think we made a business decision to go ahead or what the thought was that we would get our money back.
I think we will.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's a good investment, but I just wanted to public and I couldn't remember if there was any any aid to construction. I think the AD construction is just providing the service and then paying for it.
Yeah, but I I think this is all of us and I think it was a business investment. So I don't think there was any.
And this is replacing the temporary lift station out there?
Correct, yes.
Is it completely replacing or upgrading?
No, completely replacing it. We're going to pull the old one out and that one can still be reused elsewhere. So we're going to put that on our yard in stock, but this is going to be a brand new one.
You know, since you're new, I'll tell you, I've had some people that have signed contracts with the developers in that center and they've been told that the city of Fairhope has been holding that up to which I said, no.
What is the holdup?
We hadn't held any of that up.
But what is the holdup? If I may, I don't, I'm, are you privy to that?
Yeah.
Talk to, hey, talk to me later.
Okay, got you. Very good.
Any more questions?
No, thank you, sir.
I got a lot of questions, but none for you. Thank you.
Got you. Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
Can't get out of it, no questions, Kevin.
Nice job.
All right, who is?
Good job, Darryl. Welcome, my friend.
Is, number five is an ordinance for, to change the the ordinance for.
Chief talked about that last.
Parking authority and committee, that's not an issue.
Yeah, they just want to.
It says they may remove them after they miss more than two consecutive meetings. That's not, it's not a big deal. Number six is the grant award for financial assistance from the Alabama Department of Environmental Management for clean water.
There is no match on that, correct? That's just money from ARPA. There is no match. I don't, they didn't talk about a match or anything, that's why I was asking.
But my understanding, that's probably a $5 million project and that's.
We asked for five something, we only got one point something, 1.1. We asked for 5.8, I think, or 5.7. And so my question was, since we only got the one, my question is, when I was reading this, I read through it carefully, I never saw that they were expecting anything from us as far as a match percentage wise.
No, I just don't know if for a project, if that's enough. And then they did offer for us to be able to borrow money out of that revolving fund at 2.2%.
Right.
Yeah, so I don't think, Corey, I think what you're saying is there's no, there's no requirement for us to match any money to get this 1.15, but I think the issue is, I don't think it can complete whatever the plan we want to do.
It's committing us to another.
3.4 million.
Yeah, that's without a match, right? Yeah, 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 right.
But it does, I guess, what you're saying, give us access to some pot of money for a very low interest rate?
Yes.
All right.
That don't make sense at all, yeah.
Well, they've had that revolving program of funds out there for years and the city's had ability to borrow from it, but you know, we have other means. So there's options that if you're, if you're wanting to, you could look at their funds or we could go out to local banks.
Can we borrow cheaper than what we're getting paid on our?
Yeah, much.
Yeah.
Can we borrow cheaper than what we're getting paid on our reserves?
Have to put it out there to the banks, see what's going on.
Okay.
What you want to do?
You know, because right now in our reserves, we're getting, you know, four, five.
Right. So Kim, talk about this. This is on the agenda. Let's just clarify this because I'm so, so we put this out here just to receive this money. We really need 5.7 million. They're offering a particular amount. If we say yes, our options are A, find another 4 million plus dollars, B, get other grant money from other federal agencies, or C, not do it at all. Is that, is that where we are? I'm just.
That's what I, I mean, I think you're either, you're going to have to borrow money somewhere, you know, line of credit, we've talked about that and I'm planning to come by the end of the month to talk about a line of credit for the wastewater and the water projects that we have a lot of projects going on. So you're going to have a choice of if you earmark what this project's going to be and it's a $5 million, you're getting a portion as a grant fund and then you're going to have to come up with.
Come up with the rest.
I think the main thing is, if it's a project we're going to need to do anyways, then it makes sense to get the grant and do the project.
I think we should get a second opinion on that project. I just want like another company to take a look and tell us that we need to spend 6 million on headworks.
Is this what this money is for? Because that's another, is this what this is for, the headworks? Yeah.
I'm saying more philosophically, if it's something we're going to do anyways, then we should do it. But if it, if we aren't determined that this is a project we want to do, then we need to.
Yeah, that's another thing.
Definitely need to get that clarified.
Yeah, so this this project needs to go through, especially with Fairhope's growth. It's it's got to be done. The the headworks is antiquated, it's old, it's a choke point for the whole system.
So.
Did you see how confident Darryl was just coming here and playing that out there?
Yeah, I understand.
Getting a little more comfortable.
But so there, we've, we've had this conversation several times. We're talking about 5.8 million to do headworks as opposed to creating another facility. Is there any point forecasting, will Fairhope need another facility?
No, not with our current footprint. We can expand where we're at. The, I think the issue is going to be with with relocating another wastewater plant is you're going to have to go inland because there's no way we're going to be able, the ADEM is going to allow us to build another one right, right close, this close to the bay. With that, if you do move inland, there's going to be issues with where are you going to discharge 3 to 4 million gallons of treated water a day? It's got to be discharged somewhere.
So there was some historical records, guys, back in the past that we probably need to kind of go back to with some of the past council that was speaking about this prophetically as far as the airport area, somewhere in that area as an industrial site for this type of work. And maybe I'm wrong, but maybe they didn't do their due diligence, but they had drawings and everything for this. It seems to me if they went that far to get an engineer and pay that much money for drawings, that they would know or have some type of idea where you would dump. Now, I don't know that answer, I'm just thinking out loud, but do we know those answers? Have you seen that research?
I I have not, but talking with the engineers that that we have, that we work with all the time, they're not confident ADEM will even issue a discharge permit that that far inland.
They had settling ponds there. I don't think this wasn't discharging, it wasn't a pipe going to the bay or anything like that. It was, that's about $100,000, there were.
That sounds, that does sound familiar.
Settling ponds.
Okay, so.
Which is common, but you know, we still are on the coast and we still have a pretty high water table and ADEM's getting.
So, so the wastewater plant, the, you know, you've got three parts. You've got your headworks, you've got your main body and then and then you have your disinfection and discharge. The main body is great. It's, it's, it's the headwork, it's where all, where all the raw sewage comes in, it's a choke point. And so what we're trying to do is is speed that up. So we, if we have these massive rating rate events, we don't end up overflowing. And that's what all of this is going to prevent, is going to prevent.
SSOs.
A lot less grit getting into the system, which is wear and tear on your pumps. And another big thing is redundancy. So right now, we have one bar screen and if that fails, I think Jason said it about it, last night was 30, 30 something thousand dollars because they're a sole source for parts and they're almost impossible to get. And that's what we're trying to get, get rid of, to have redundancy and to buy a headworks that you can, parts are readily available.
But that, I mean, I don't dispute anything you just said and I know I've heard the redundancy and that's a really good argument. But I guess when you're spending $6 million, I don't want a water treatment salesman selling me a plant that is more than I need. I mean, if you can get it for four or three and a half, I just think when we spend that, I wouldn't mind paying somebody to give me a second opinion on that.
We've got multiple engineering firms that have given us ideas and and rough costs. So we're assessing that right now.
So I'm going to ask one more question, I'm going to let you go, Darryl. That 5.8 is with all the bells and whistles or is that just the, the, getting a job done is 5.8?
I I think getting the job done is 5.8. Another, another big thing is odor control. You know, that, we've got, we get complaints a lot about odor control. We're spending a lot of money on chemicals to to suppress the odors that are escaping the headworks. And that's going to be the stinkiest part of your plant is where all that raw sewage comes in.
How many millions of dollars are we going to spend to to quiet the handful of people that move next door to a sewer plant? And now I want to spend millions of dollars to keep it smelling good there.
Right.
Yeah, but I think that sounds like a, an added benefit, not the.
That's not a basic.
Not the, not the need for it, but that's, that's a benefit to it.
And that's what I'm asking. So in that project, if that wasn't in there, would it still be 5.8 or is that a big cost?
If what wasn't in there?
This odor control.
No, that, that's as, as far as I can, in the preliminary engineering specs that I've seen from a couple of engineers, that includes odor control, capturing those odors and running through a charcoal filter.
What proportion of that is that?
You know, the number.
What portion, what portion of the cost is?
Is that a 500, is that a 200 or is that a 2 million?
Yeah, that's what, that's really.
I mean, it'd be palatable if it's a couple hundred thousand out of that total figure, but if it's.
I'd have to get back to you.
3 million out of, I mean.
Yeah, I think, and I guess where we'd go from here is just, just applying, accepting this money, we still have a lot to do before we get to the project that we're going to be using the money for, including getting kind of the the grand plan from whatever group of engineers we ultimately decide to use.
Correct.
And getting a cost breakdown to see where the money's going to be going and how it's going to be spent.
Correct. So, so we've already done some preliminary poking around and asking and and a couple of engineering firms graciously have kind of give us kind of what their proposal and design is and what they think it'll cost. So, and we're, we're well within that realm.
Guys, anything else for Darryl?
No, we'll talk about it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darryl. All right, and last that we haven't spoken about is number eight, which is a resolution that the city elects to come under the provisions of Act 22, 2022-229 and that the city agrees to provide all funds necessary to the employees' retirement system to cover the cost of the one-time lump sum payment as provided for by said act for those eligible employees retired and beneficiaries of deceased retirees. This is essentially the cost of living bump.[1666.13] This is essentially the cost of living bump. Is that right, Kim?
No. So is this the same thing that, that we've been getting the letters about in our mailbox?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm going to let Kim talk, then I got quite, yeah.
It's a one-time lump sum, one-time lump sum. And then the letter that we received, Lisa brought to me today, is a total of $66,990. But this would be the retirees to receive a lump sum bonus check.
Right. So, so we would do the lump sum, this is, these are questions and I, and I, you know, this is another incentive as far as retention, I get it, you know, how we treat our people afterwards, but, and I just want to clarify, that bill has a one-time, the sunset is a one-time, I just want to clarify, just a one-time deal. But then we come back, I think in December, they get the opportunity to get another bump as well, correct?
Well, we've given a city lump sum payment as a, as a year-end bonus every year and I think the law just is allowing for us an additional bonus payment by the, by the city.
So we're going to give, just clarifying, we'll give.
The ones retirees and others are current employees.
Yeah.[1692.32]